Good morning.
Morning.
Heather, we're good, right? I think so. Okay. All right. So, um, welcome to the Committee of the Whole. This is the one that we've been talking about at the Budget Workshop and in different conversations, like, "We're going to come back to you in a Committee of the Whole. We're going to come back and talk about this. We'll come back and explain it to you. We'll come back to you with this topic." So this is a Committee of the Whole that has three different topics wrapped into it, and they all reference the Law Enforcement Center, the Adult Detention Center, the Juvenile Detention Center, and then the safety barriers that are currently budgeted for in the 2025 capital plan, I believe. So just the slide really quickly. Our purpose today is first, we're going to talk about the Adult Detention Center Safety Barrier Project. Then we're going to roll into the Facility Assessment, scope of work. And then the third topic is to discuss the Juvenile Detention Center. And then, at the end of the presentation today, we'll be seeking consensus from the County Board as to whether or not you're interested in moving forward with the possibility of a juvenile detention center. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Marty and the safety barriers.
Okay. Thank you, Stacy. Commissioners, um, I'll just preface this in saying that our 60-bed unit has been empty since 2020, since COVID. And I knew the time would come when I'll be posed with the question of what are we going to do with an empty unit? So we have been thinking about it for a few years. And because of the need of a juvenile detention center... Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm jumping way ahead. I'm sorry. Let's start with the barriers. Okay. I addressed this at one of the Budget Workshops, and how did this come about? And it came about because... Oops, shoot. Can you see this slide? So this came from a video on our second-floor detainee facility, where they're fighting with this detainee, and his feet are off the ground. Our deputies are compromised. It all, it ended, it ended fine. But certainly, the possibility of one or all of them going over the railing was a, was a possibility. So that's what triggered the need for safety barriers, if you will. So we started looking at that early 2024. And we did get some quotes. What you're looking at right now is the current view of our upstairs in one of the bigger units. We have two of these. So from floor to top, it's probably eight feet, very likely, with the wide open over the rail. I never did measure how far it is to the floor, but things wouldn't end well if they did go over the floor. So these are examples of new builds. The first one, I don't know which one that's from. Well, this has a mesh, mesh wires, which we thought originally we wouldn't mind doing because it keeps the airflow going. But then we thought maybe they could climb on it. I have one here. And the next one has a plexiglass or some type of glass barrier, and then open bars. This is the one from Lee Sauer County. They built in two years ago, two or three years ago, they moved in. This is the one that I would prefer, with, just with the full-open, straight-up bars. And in particular, we, the quote we have is not for this type of barrier. But we did get some quotes. So we're pretty close in what we think the prices will be. Our hope was to get six units done. We have six units, three, two big ones and four smaller ones. We're hoping to get all those done in, in three years, meaning we'd like to do two units a year. But we believe, from the estimates that we have, we may be able to just get one of the bigger units done in 2025. But again, those quotes will still have to come in with the more particulars if, if we proceed moving forward. So you'll see the budgets moving forward of all the units. They measured, they came and measured all of them out, and we added some additional dollars for future increases.
Second question.
Yep.
As I look at them, and this is just a picture, but, you know, whenever you're building railings, it's like a three-inch spacing that you got to meet for code. Don't they, they look like they're a lot wider than three inches. Don't they have to meet the same code as building code? Don't they, don't they have to meet the same code as other building code as far as spacing on the up and down? I mean, those look like they're like 10, 12 inches apart.
They do look wider. I don't...
That might actually be the distortion of our photo, too.
Oh, okay.
Because we stretched it to make it fit on the page.
Yeah. It just, everything, everything you have to do with a railing on a deck or railing on stairs or whatever is three-inch spacing. And I know it's about kids, but it just seems like that's awful wide, but not, just a comment.
I don't know the width or...
I would say I think that what you're seeing could have to do with the distortion of the photo. Also, the individuals who've provided the cost estimates for 2025 and years to the future are... It's a, it's a jail system, and I'm looking at John because I think he knows where they came from. They work within facilities. They work within adult detention centers. So this is their, their expertise. So I would assume they'd be following the code that they need to and requirements.
Yeah, and the fact that it's in the Lee Sauer County Jail means it's already met DOC standards. So it's definitely distortion. If you even look at the doors in the background, they're not truly that wide. That's just distortion. It's stretching those photos.
And are these examples retrofitted ones, or are these all new builds that you're showing us pictures of?
That I don't even all know. These were some of the pictures we just got through, through this process. So Masur, I don't know if that was retrofitted.
That's a new, that's a new build.
And have you guys talked with anybody who's retrofitted their jail with barriers?
I would say one of the photos was also the Winona County Jail. I believe that might have been the half-plexiglass. Nope, the one on the right.
That's a retrofitted one?
Nope, that would have been a new build. The one on the left, I can't tell you.
So we don't, we haven't talked to anybody who's actually added the barriers to an existing jail?
Yes, we have. We have, at your request, we sent that email.
Yeah.
And we had several respond back, and we have a list of all of those.
I just wondered what kind of system they put in, if they did it with the retrofit.
I'm not sure.
I'd say, so on the estimate that we received from the company that provided the estimates, they asked what provided two different options. I haven't had a chance to take a deep dive into that, and I don't know that anybody has, but they came in and measured our facility, looked at our facility, and determined what would be the best way to retrofit, because I believe they've done that. I think that's why they were brought in. I haven't been a part of that process.
They had done several retrofits, I believe, up in the Hennepin, Ramsey. I think that's where this company kind of specialized in, and that's who Ramsey was using as their go-to person.
And do you know what kind of grants these other counties were able to find?
No idea.
What kind of what?
Grants. There's tons of grants out there for different things, so I wondered what the other counties had done about that.
I think there's opportunities for us to explore that for the future when it comes to, you know, if we're moving forward with this, if we're budgeting for it in 2025 to do Phase One. If there's a Phase Two and a Phase Three to complete the rest of the units, we could...
And I think about my background in mental health, where you have pretty violent patients in the hospital. And so I think about regions where I spent quite a bit of my time, and there were three units, and one was pretty high-security. One was folks who are fairly close to being let go, where they were almost done, and then one in the middle. And so the amount of built-in structure for security was much higher in the unit where people were, you know, more dangerous. And for the people who were about to be discharged, it was pretty low-level security. And I have no idea if jail populations are separated in that kind of way, or if they are not. And so I guess I'd want to make sure we were starting, at least, with the area that was most likely to be dangerous.
And that's what we were hoping to do by doing two units. We have a, what we called, I think B-unit is our mental health, essentially, unit. That probably would be the highest, highest need. I think it's B.
And B-units, when they first come into the ADC, that's where we're initially setting that classification level for.
Right. So you're figuring out what the level of...
But I would add, the first initial photo that showed that inmate being taken down from the second floor, that had been an inmate up to that point.
Right.
Had been classified higher. That's why it was on a second level. What you do get is there are different medications people take. There's...
I understand it's not a perfect system, and you can always be wrong.
Even on that day, that was just the mental health side of it kind of coming through, some of that.
I understand that.
Any companies are willing to put estimates for this? I mean, do you have one, two, three companies competing for this? Have you just been to one? Or where are we at?
I think we went and just got an initial bid, so we knew what the price was. When I saw the first prices, I'm like, "That's higher than I thought." You just don't know what the costs were, so this was our way just to go get that initial bid. There's many different companies out there that I think we'd be going out and putting it out to bid for.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Our very first initial one was 1.55 million for all six. And then we did get a second bid from a company that does jails. I think this is the bid that you're seeing.
All right. Just a comment. I think once we get something specked that we can actually go out and bid... I mean, there's local companies that may be able to produce this, fabricate it, and they can paint it for it. Yeah. They, we have that capability even within the county. So once we get to a point where we can spec it, then I think we're going to get something. And I think, you know, we can look at all different kinds of models of these and what they look like. But, you know, early on, we talked about the air handling system in there. We can't screw that up by putting in a barrier that makes us have to now fix our air handling system because it doesn't flow right. So I think we have, we have, we have limitations of what we can do, but we have options as how we get there.
Right. And this one that I'm showing you is the one that I think I prefer, and I think we all do, probably going to be cheaper than the quotes that we got, because it wasn't quoted for this type of system. But this is a fairly straightforward barrier, I think. And you're right, we could have multiple manufacturers in the county, look at it, and see if they would want to do that.
And you don't have to wash all the glass.
Yeah, we don't want to do that. And it won't mess with this, with air handling.
So, so we've approved some dollars to go forward to start this process. So as you get more...
So currently, there's money in the capital plan for 2025, the $500,000 for, to start this process. So this was really, like, informational as to truly what is the safety barrier project? What does it look like? What do we need it for? A couple of our options, so if that, those dollars stay within the capital plan through the rest of the budgeting process, then in 2025, we can start moving forward with specing a project and determining exactly what needs to happen and what product we're going with.
So you're, what you're saying is you're not going to do much more work on this till we get totally through the budget process?
Correct. That's correct.
And, and the reason we don't have all the answers that you have for us, or the questions you have.
Right.
Because it didn't...
You're not going to expend more, more dollars till you know that the dollars are going to be there?
Correct. Okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'll just follow up a little bit. So a lot of this information is preliminary information. So when we're talking about barriers, we got numbers from a different, different places. I think ADC had received some numbers. I had received some information from Klein-McCarthy Architects as well. But they all come from DOC-approved systems. So when we talk about what dollar amount it's going to be specifically, we don't have that information until we can spec what we need for that system, or for that unit, or those different units. So I think preliminary numbers, kind of to see what the, if we are going to proceed with these things. I mean, I think it's something that's been set aside, dollars been set aside for next year. So I think we can try to work within that budget and see what we can, we can accomplish for those barriers. So hopefully, this doesn't, this doesn't imply that this is all we know, but this is what we know. So the Adult Detention Center is 26-years-old. So we're, we're at that point where a lot of those systems are starting to show their age and fail. The fixtures in the ADC and a lot of the equipment, many are becoming obsolete. We're having a difficult time, you know, sourcing parts for some of those things, for plumbing fixtures. And just the overall deterioration of the piping and plumbing. Plumbing systems are one thing. I think we just need an assessment of where we're at. The piping systems with our, we have hydronic systems in each of those buildings, and they are a shared system. So we've seen some failures with glycol leaks and victallic fittings failing. So we have been trying to be proactive on replacing some of those things as we see them, but over time, we're, we'll see more failures there. So the roof, just, it's just a note that when we're looking out 20 years, it was replaced in 2015. Seems like it was just done, but with an expected life of 30 years, more with good maintenance and upkeep. But generally, we're going to budget that at a 30-year point. Excuse me. And I think it was about $600,000, $650,000 initially to replace that in 2015. So I would guess we'll be well over a million for that, if we had to do a full replacement. But again, part of that is just maintaining that system, see if we can extend that life. Flooring, lighting, furnishings, just when the, when the numbers were put in the capital budget, a lot of that, a lot of that was put in as a project cost. None of those are really broken out as individual pieces. So we need to try to identify which areas need replacement, which things need to be updated or not updated. So instead of just a full-on, hey, there's a carpet number for 2027, we need to figure out where that actually is going to get applied. And then exterior needs, tuck pointing, to my knowledge, has never been completed. We, I had some estimates performed for spot pointing. We're at the point where some of it has to be removed. The mortar has to be removed completely before the bricks start falling out. So that needs to be worked in the budget. I have, like I said, I have some preliminary numbers for spot pointing, but I think we are looking at a little bit bigger project there. Same with caulking, and at some point sidewalks, parking lots need to be replaced. So just what the facility assessment is, what I, what I'm planning is the facility assessment, master plan would identify the county's current future facility needs, prioritize projects, and provide cost estimates for short- and long-term planning. This is just a quick process. It, it does get somewhat involved with, with professional services, but it identifies our objectives, takes a look at the site and the building, puts together concept designs for, whether it be structural or remodeling, or in this case, a lot of this is mechanical and infrastructure of the facilities. And then we need, you know, accurate cost estimates so that we can budget for these things going forward. And all of these, all of this information would be presented to the board. Just kind of highlight Klein-McCarthy a little bit. They've done, they've done over 400 county and state studies. So, you know, we reached out to them to get some information. The ADC admin, admin staff also reached out to them for the safety barricade numbers. So I think with their expertise and their, and their ability with, well, they've got quite a bit of recent experience, but also they have some resources with Chris Toma of Elk Creek Consulting, which he's a former jail administrator. But also, I think importantly, he's with, he was with the DOC, and he was a standards developer for the DOC. So really relevant and to what we're talking about when we're talking about what can we put in, in a jail system? What kind of barricades, things like that. So initially, the base services, we'd be looking at a master plan that would include the facility needs, but the HVAC and, and mechanical systems for all three facilities, the LEC, ADC, and Justice. I know we're primarily talking about the ADC today, but since they have shared mechanical systems and shared security systems, I think it makes sense to look at all of these things. Gives us a roadmap for the next 20 years and a thorough inventory. Again, we'll break those, those projects down so that we have specifics on each piece of equipment and what their lifespans and, and needs for replacement are. So we would proceed with some architectural mechanical review, and then look at concept designs for updated or alternate systems. And then we had to have a strategy for improvement expansions. So initially, just a phase master plan for capital improvements and planned budgeting. And that professional services fee, just estimated, have not determined the final scope. But again, these are preliminary numbers, about $35,000 to $40,000 for all three of those facilities. With Klein-McCarthy, we also have some optional services. Contiguity Group does, does cost estimating for these type of facilities. So good, good experience there. So that optional service, we could add an estimated fee of $7,900. And then they do specifically look at juvenile detention facilities. So with Elk Creek Consulting, we'd be looking at the ADC specifically for an additional $5,300. So again, back to the JDC, if that concept is pursued, I think I would recommend including that into the master plan. And then working with Elk Creek Consulting to get the, the planning process and what the requirements are for DOC and what we need in the facility to, as far as operational needs. So incorporate those safety systems for sure into that concept design so that we have a plan going forward. We know we're looking at one next year, but I think if we continue to go forward, we should have a plan in place to incorporate those going forward, so. And then Contiguity Group, I would recommend that, so we have good project estimates.
Any questions at all on the Facility Assessment piece before we roll into the Juvenile Detention Center?
The comment, our capital plan is huge because we got a lot of equipment. My question is, should we separate our capital plan into facilities and everything else? Do we have a facilities plan that can integrate in there? Or should it be, should there be, should, should we look at facilities separate? Because when they get mixed in everything, it's very hard to pick out and, and work with just facilities and work with, because, you know, the HHS building is now going to be 10-years-old since we did that. And, you know, I don't know, do we really have a good plan as to what in 10-years we're going to really need to be looking at there? Or, or our out-county shops, or our public work? I mean, I, maybe there's a, maybe there's a, this is a point where we should kind of separate the two and have that, just a thought.
So yes, the, the overall CIP, it, it has the list of, of every single asset on there. Down at the very bottom of it, it does summarize by specific type. So it's not a separate of, on this tab or this document. It's all buildings. This document, it's all equipment. If you, if you go all the way down to the bottom, it does separate by, this is a cost estimate for land, which we're generally not buying land, so those are zeros. Building or land improvements, equipment, IT equipment, specifically vehicles. So we do break it down into categories that way, but as you said, not by specific type of, a separate list for specific type of equipment. It's something we could do, but I, at the end of the day, I don't know how, I mean, that would, that's more work maintaining separate lists.
Is there a way, is there a way to tag all those things that are building? And then you could just get a report that pulls all them out? So it's not mixed altogether? Is there a way to?
Yeah, it's, it's on a file. We can filter it by specific type and present that information if it's requested. I guess sidebar, and I don't mean to derail this, but we, we've been thinking about this as well as, as specific types of item and items that are on there, and how should they be presented? And we were internally more thinking about computer equipment specifically, because we have so many computers in the county, do we need to list out each and every single computer? So this is something that we've been thinking through, and it's a, it's a very large document. There's a lot of work that goes into maintaining it and updating it. So we, we have had thoughts on, on modifying, though.
It's, and I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't. It's just sometimes it's really hard when you're looking at it to... You know, you can see the N-number at the bottom, but how do you, how do you go back and pick out every one of them that is related to building and facilities maintenance that is not equipment?
Yep.
It's just, it, and I'm only speaking for me, because, yeah.
But I think it's true. The capital plan is so huge, so having some sub-grouping would be helpful. And it's not that I know the answer to that, but it makes some sense to have facilities separate and maybe IT separate. I'm, I'm not thinking we're drawing that conclusion. We're just talking.
Yeah, the current, the organizational structure of it is by specific department. That's how it's organized. If the board would like it presented in a different way, we could present it in a different way.
But the building doesn't go to a specific department.
Generally, no. I think some of the Public Works buildings might be within the Public Works area.
LEC does, too.
Question on the master planning. Is that, what if we don't do anything with that other pod? I mean, is that, do we, do we see in the future, 10-years down the road, we get the juvenile detention? I mean, is that going to cost us money versus break even?
We'll get there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, to be continued.
Okay. But if we do, yeah, okay.
I think, I, I think I'll answer a little bit of that question in saying that whether we do something with that pot or not, that we still have all of these other issues that are happening throughout the entire facility. But within the Juvenile Detention Center slides here, we'll get through the costing that's associated with all of that.
So my question, and it really is a question, I don't, so the master plan, let's say it's $35,000, whatever it is. But the things that we have to do, the things that need to be done to the building are going to need to be done whether we have this plan or whether we don't.
Correct.
So how does the plan help us?
Okay. So we do have quite a number of things in the capital plan for the next 20-years. I mean, so a lot of those things we know, right? So we know Chiller is going to last, let's just say, 20-years.
And we have emergency funds as well.
So we can, we can schedule those things out. So a lot of the things that we don't know are the internals, right? So like the piping systems, plumbing systems, things like that. How long do they last? How long will they last? When, what's our schedule for replacement of those things over the course of 20-years? So do we wait for failures, or do we be proactive and try to, try to get a master plan together? So the master plan helps to prioritize all of the projects, operational. So if there's operational needs, they need to remodel the intake unit, or they need to add a padded room or something like that. Those things all get incorporated into the capital plan. Right now, I think, I think ADC and operations, I think they schedule some things and budget for some things. I think facilities budgets for some things, and then Sheriff's Office budgets for some things. So trying to just tie that master plan together.
So do you believe somehow having the master plan will, in the end, save money for the taxpayers?
Yeah, I think we're trying to be proactive and, and head off those failures before they happen, or get to the point where we have to have an emergency budget meeting to repair something.
So I think about, like, being a homeowner, if I had somebody come out, the electrician would find things, the plumber would find things, the, everybody would find things. But I wouldn't myself actually do those until they started to give me some trouble. And the fact that I paid him to find it would just mean I would worry about the trouble rather than I would actually do something about it. So what I'm trying to understand is... to understand is, does this actually end up benefiting the county? And maybe, because maybe the problem is a smaller problem when it's fixed. Or maybe we're fixing things sooner than we actually need to. I think either could.
Right. Well, I think some of it is also, I mean, we budget for, let's say, that chiller in 20 years. Do we need to replace it in 20 years? I'm not sure. Maybe we get 25 or 30.
Yeah, maybe.
But with a good assessment, we can, we can start to determine some of those things. But we also don't want a failure at the, at the law enforcement center. You know, we cannot be without cooling or heating or at the jail. So, you know, part of my job is trying to be proactive and prevent those things and not have emergencies and emergency shutdowns. So, I feel like, yeah, some master plan does do that for us. It certainly lays out everything that needs to happen within that facility, including, again, these would be meetings with the sheriff's staff, with the ADC staff to see what their needs are.
And I think Todd's point, or maybe it was Brad's, is, well, why wouldn't we need that for all the buildings then?
Yeah, and I think I have some preliminary information on the other buildings too. I've done some ahead of time, been a little bit more proactive on this building. We've done some space studies already on internal needs and some of the moving departments around. Again, I think we can look at that a little bit deeper. I think I've done both interior and exterior for HHS, just very preliminary, getting numbers on those things. But I, yeah, I think a better master plan.
I think that's one of the tools that would, would be incredibly helpful for all of us is, once we get through this assessment and this master plan, is we actually know what's going to need to happen in the next five, 10, 15 years. And we have some budgeting tools that are tied along with that. So, instead of being reactive when it comes to something breaking and now it's an emergency, I mean, we can choose to, to plan to fix this stuff and we can choose to plan to pay for, you know, then we can figure out how we need to pay for all of these things that might be coming down the pipe or needing to be replaced. It was probably about 15 years ago that we did a very similar study in the government center with Short Elliott Hendrickson. And I believe that we are finally getting to the very minimal pieces left in the capital plan being crossed off the list of the things that needed to be replaced or done in this building. Very simple from replacing some paint, to thermostats, to lighting, to the boiler plant, to cooling towers, UPS batteries, that kind of stuff. And that was, it was a fantastic tool to be able to work from because we had the list, we could prioritize. But yes, it also gave finance and admin an opportunity to build that into capital plans instead of dumping it all at once. So, that's another piece of the, the assessment is having the financial piece.
And I think in, in some cases, projects are pretty straightforward where we can handle those. But in a lot of cases, we do need outside services and professional services to determine what's needed and to look at options. And, you know, maybe there's alternate ways to be heating or cooling a building. So, I think at some point, we still need to get them involved in some of these major replacements and, and some of it gets pretty involved, especially with shared systems. We can't just replace something in the Justice Center or something in the, in the law enforcement center. They're all connected.
But what you just described, there's something that you would identify when that system, a chilling, cooling, whatever, these towers had to be replaced. They're not going to be fulfilled in this master plan, correct? I mean, so, when it comes to replacing heating, cooling system, that's when it's time, master plan says, yep, do, we're going to have to replace it. Well, then you compile it. It's not in the master plan, how we're going to do it or rework the system, correct? Probably not. It's more dealt with, with the contractor when you come in. So, you've identified all the way along that we have in the capital plan, all these items and everything that we're going to do. So, it sounds like we have a fairly, somewhat of a master plan in there. You bring up like plumbing and piping, which you've got me baffled that, I don't know if they're going to come in and tell you that, well, these pipes that you put in are only going to last 20 years, 30 years, 50 years? Is that an expectation that we don't realize currently that you're saying somebody come in and engineer and architect is going to do that? Which would be baffling to me. I'm just not really pulling off of what Susan said too, but I'm just questioning, don't, because question I'd have for you is, you and your staff do not have the expertise to look through the facility and look at it and said, the chiller's going to last 20 years. We know that these fixtures and stuff. I just, I'm not following how we don't have the ability to look at this, to formulate our own master plan, which sounds like we already have it for a lot of these large items.
Yes.
I'm baffled about what we really, you know, when Stacy brings up thermostats, I, okay. So, lighting, we needed a plan? I don't know. I, yes, I am very questionable spending $40,000 for somebody to give us a plan, which you kind of have already there. If we don't have the ability to do it, well, then that's a whole nother question that there's some of these items that we don't have the expertise to look at. But I don't know that you, when you mentioned the chillers or any of those things, they might last 25 years. Well, we haven't figured out replacing them at 20 years, but usually, I'm assuming you're not going to go out and replace it at 20 years just because it wasn't a capital plan when you could, over the course of that time, it's probably going to need some repairs and maintenance. And somebody, an expert in that would come in and look at it and say, no, it's got another five years useful life, which may be diverge from what the master plan said. So.
Right. And I think it's fluid. I mean, we, again, it's trying to get a grasp on everything that needs to be replaced. Yes, I think we've done a lot of trying to add things, worked with Lucas into the capital budget that we're not in there since, since I've come on board. I can't speak for what's done in the past or how things were maintained, but, you know, we're seeing that now. So, that, at that 25, 26-year point, we're seeing some of those things starting to fail. So, I don't know the full process of coming in inspecting, you know, plumbing pipes, but if, if you're asking me, yes, I think we need to replace some plumbing pipes. To what extent do we need to do that? I don't know that. Because different parts of the building may be different. But if we're seeing failures, then I think we're going to see more failures. So, if we can get a good assessment of the facility, then I think, yeah, I think we can plan for that. I mean, does that?
No, I'm just baffled when you say replacing plumbing pipes. I mean, in order to know that, to do that, they're going to either have to find a failure point, or you're going to have to scope and inspect the entire piping system. That's not in a master plan. You're going to have to hire a consultant and a group to come in, unless that's the plan, is that in this $35,000 to $40,000, we're going to scope the entire plumbing system?
Well, yes, it's an assessment of the facility. And again, the scope has not been determined, the final scope. So, you know, we can certainly work towards that.
You just presented a very broad scope.
Yes.
And my question mark is, it seems like if we've done our job, if our, if your predecessor and you have done all your, everybody's done their job, looked at the failure points and everything the whole way through, just as any homeowner, any farmer, any business owner for their building has done, it seems like we have a fairly good plan in tact already. So, why are we maybe not better off spending $40,000 on some of this, you know, I haven't, I, I fail to see any specific item that you've presented to me, how you're not capable of identifying this already as a plan. And the maintenance staff is not able to look at this and say, here's a failure point. We found it after five years, after 10 years, that we don't know this already. So, yes, I have a question mark of spending $35,000 to $40,000 to hire a company to come in and give us maybe a more thorough assessment of stuff that we pretty much already know.
I think that if, and I don't want to speak for you, but I think, I think that facility staff does an outstanding job at what they do. So, they're always playing reactive. You are always playing the executor. So, either facilities or county administration, we're executing the projects that are out there. We're executing the dollars that have been budgeted, or we're dealing with the things. If Tim had the time to be able to go and determine and make, or make the determination, or his staff as to all the things that needed to be done, that'd be something too. But we're constantly on the other end of it when it comes to, once the problem's been identified, reacting to it and figuring out how we need to execute getting everything fixed versus being able to be, you've been proactive on a number of things and put a number of things into the budget, but there's just, there's a point to where we just can't do it all. We can't make all of the assessments. We're not the subject matter experts in all of the things that are in every single building to also do the regular jobs that we do and then execute the project when the time is done.
Well, I, I mean, I see the work that this, this will get us is, how do we fix systems over time? It's not like you can just go in and we're going to fix this pipe because that one's leaking. How do you fix a system? And understanding, you know, these people are going to understand how you do that on a more scheduled and phased system versus reacting to the problem of today. And, and in the end, that ends up being less, less costly than being reactive. To actually know what that, what it takes to do, what it takes to replace all the toilets and sinks in this, in this pod versus fixing only the ones that leak. And you can do the, you can do it either way. I, I think it's, it's wise to know, how do we, how do we phase this and make it work over the next 10 years if that's what it takes to do it versus be reactive all the time? And then, and then you're always, you're always having to make adjustments to where detainees are or whatever because you have all these one-off issues. Let's, it just, it seems like you're going to get some kind of a overarching plan on how to follow through and make things work. But, and I understand, you know, I'm the same as everybody else. I'm not going to go replace all the pipes in my house.
No.
But I also know, once you start, it's probably wiser to do more than what just that one leak is because the other one's just down the pipe a little ways. So, I understand some of that. I think that expertise is, is different than what you do on a day-to-day basis.
Just to some extent, I think a master plan for a, what, $25 million building? I don't, I don't, I don't know if I have that number right. $40,000, it's not that much money. But if someone told me I might need my pipes replaced in 10 years, I wouldn't schedule it for 10 years. I would want to look again in, as it was approaching 10 years to see, does it really need to be done or doesn't it? So, in a way, it doesn't seem like they can, they can't predict into the future either. They can tell us an estimate, but they can't really tell us when, I don't even know what a chiller is, but they, they can't tell us really when that's going to need to be done. So, in some ways, it seems like a small amount of money for a very expensive building, but, but.
To me, it becomes a logical process to.
Yeah.
To maintain this building versus a hodgepodge of, we got to fix this today, we got to fix that tomorrow.
Right.
Let's have a logical process how we make sure this building stays operational.
Yeah. But to some extent, I think it'll always be a hodgepodge because you don't know what's going to come up when, and then you have to change your plan. And so, I think the question in my mind is, is seemingly, yes, basic is, well, should we spend the $40,000 replacing toilets? Or should we spend it on finding out we need to do that and some other things? And, and I don't, I don't know what the right answer is, but we can only spend it once, the $40,000. So, we want to, we want to do a good job.
$40,000 going to be incorporated into the juvenile also?
No.
If we add the ju, if the board chooses to continue to moving, or to move forward with diving deeper into the juvenile detention center, that's where Tim talked about, we can add the additional $5,300 on to this study for them to be the expertise as what's needed for the juvenile detention center. The other piece above, above this is the cost estimating piece, that additional fee of $7,900. That is, that is where we're going to get our numbers when it comes to this master plan and what we're going to be working with for future budgets for the next 10 years. So, I mean, we feel that, you know, we're always asking, you know, are these numbers accurate in the capital plan? You know, where did this estimate come from? How old is this estimate? Is this just talking to a local contractor? You know, we're not consistent and we do the best guesses that we have when it comes to putting dollars into the capital plan. But that would provide us with professionals. This is what they do, is they, they do the cost estimating and those will be, those will be numbers that we can feel really good about going into future capital plans. I will point out that, you know, if they tell us in 10 years, we need to replace a certain thing, I think over the last 10 years, we can be, we can be pretty honest and pretty consistent with the fact that we've had things budgeted in the capital plan, whether it's different facilities, things, I think some UPS batteries are an option and we've, we've been, you know what, they don't need to be replaced right now, so we're not going to replace them.
Right.
And then we carry those dollars over, or they get reallocated to whatever type of emergency that we may have had. So, to the point of, you know, if it's, if it says to be replaced at this time, if it truly doesn't need to be replaced, we don't execute that.
I understand that. And then the estimated, the estimation fee probably is only good for a relatively short period of time because costs are always changing.
Well, I think it would be, yeah, current estimates for those replacements. And then I think finance typically adds their, their.
Right. So, it would tell us in 2025 what the cost would be, but it wouldn't, you couldn't really pull that forward.
And of course, I mean, when we get closer to those, those dates, we need to get better estimates just to make sure.
Yes, I understand that. Yeah.
Well, the, the other thing with a company like this, that doing this on a continual basis, they'll be pretty good at, at telling you what inflation is doing to the cost of stuff versus us once doing this and trying to decide what's, what's the inflation if we wait five years. I think, you know, a company that does it all the time, they have a, they have a mass of information to draw from to.
I understand that. I understand that.
To give you some idea of what delaying this might cost you. Whereas, we don't have, we're just guessing. We're just throwing darts.
They're aware of what other county governments have done and all kinds of things like that. But this isn't a recurrent thing. This is a one-time going-through cost.
Correct.
Not that they update it every year, or two years, or five years. It's a one-time deal. Yeah.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
If I could just mention one thing, at the most recent policy committee, I heard that Martin County's current estimate on their new jail public works facility is $60 million. And I just did the math. I mean, we're, this is .0006% of, of that cost. And we wouldn't do this, you know, maybe you'd do it every 15 years to get better estimates and better planning, but it's a very small fraction of the investment we have across the street.
Right. Recommendations, we look for.
So, I'm just going to say something before Rhonda starts her part of this. So, having an open unit, should I wait for Brad to come back?
I think, no, he's here. He's here.
Okay. So, it's a blessing and a curse to have a 64-bed open unit, right? So, the curse is, we have an open unit and the taxpayers are paying for an empty building essentially. The blessing is, and my thoughts are, now we are able to rotate inmates to fix some of these problems that Tim just addressed as needed. So, we, we do have a plan moving forward for that if a JDC doesn't happen. By just rotating and clearing out a building, clearing out a section and fixing what needs to be fixed, painting, fixing HVAC, or whatever needs to be done, well, inmates aren't in there. So, that is our blessing where it stands now, and we are currently doing that. In the other big unit, we just switched over inmates after two years. So, two years ago, I'm just going to leave it at that, but two years ago, Rhonda brought up to me, because we kicked around a detox, a mental health facility, a JDC really is about the only three things that could maybe even fit in there. And she found the need to be great for a juvenile detention center. And I don't disagree. We're hauling kids all over the state of Minnesota and begging for beds, and there just aren't any. So, with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Rhonda and answer any questions. Christine and John are going to be like the money people on there on this thing.
So, I'll just give you a quick little history of detention in Minnesota. So, about 25, probably 25 years ago, every county in the state got a block of money. The goal was to build regional detention centers. Our block of money went to Dakota County. So, for about six, seven years, we were guaranteed a bed there. That has long since passed. And also, once COVID hit, multiple facilities closed, including Dayton Cottage at MCF Ruddering, which is our go-to. That is where most of the males in southern Minnesota went for detention. So, we've lost that facility. So, what happens now is either we call for hours to find a bed. Nine times out of 10, we don't find a bed. And those, we're trying to maintain those youth in the community. So, the next slides talk. So the next slides talk a little bit, just some case scenarios of, I talked with one juvenile agent who was in the office at the time. This is in the last year that she's had to kind of, she's had to deal with. And it's interesting, just in the last two weeks, we have had two juveniles down to Houston County. We had a juvenile holding a knife to his mother's neck. Houston County would take him after we called everywhere else because Houston County is two hours for our sheriff's department. They did take him. We also had the Burnsville School threat, is a Goodhue County resident, so that child is in Houston County at this moment after calling around, not being able to find a bed. You know, so Houston County's newer, so they're a little more available right now. I think once they catch on, that'll be filling up also. Those are eight-day holds, so every eight days, we have to bring them back to court to have a hearing to keep them in another eight days. So we, we're, we're calling on the phone all the time, and you just need to understand that we're maintaining these kids in the community. It's not always safe. The murder, we had a juvenile involved in a murder a year and a half ago, spent two weeks in detention, and they kicked him out because another county had a contract with them, so they took our bed. We couldn't find another bed. We've had, we have maintained him home on EHM. He has a parent who is very willing to help supervise, so that's been helpful. But you're involved in a murder, you're only going to spend two weeks locked up. That's, that's, that's interesting, isn't it? I mean, we would not tolerate that in the adult world. So, I mean, I'm here for questions. We're, we're struggling, everybody's struggling. When we look at our detention facility, what we would like to do is an assessment piece with it. We, we don't want to lock up kids. Those kids that are going to get locked up are high-risk, very dangerous kids. Our number one priority is public safety in, in court services. So those are those high-risk, dangerous kids. Once we get them there, we want to get them assessed. We want to get them assessed, and we want to move them out to the programming or facility that they need. So that is the big ask here too, is that we have assessment within that facility. And that, I think, is going to be the draw to bring people in. We don't want to lock kids up in Minnesota. We do not want to lock them up. We want to keep the community safe and get those kids the best treatment we can in the fastest amount of time we can. So that is kind of one of our big asks, if we go ahead with the JDC, is that we have that assessment piece with them. So geographically, you want to go to the, yeah, this is where the detention facilities are at this moment. So these are the ones we call before we make any decision. Now Carver County did approach me last year about going in on a contract with them with the Bemidji, and I just said, I can't have our sheriff's department driving to Bemidji every weekend. It's, so I denied and did not take that contract with Carver County. They still do not have a contract with anyone. I know they would be willing to contract with us. We just did some kind of general calling around, not diving in deep. So Carver would be willing to do a contract. Steel and Mossika have a contract right now, but they said they would revisit that when that contract was up, if we had a facility up and running. So we have a lot more digging in to do with other counties, if they would contract beds with us, you know, what they thought their use would be. I know our use would be high, and when I say high, I say four to six juveniles. You know, we're not going to be locking up 30 kids from Goodhue County.
Are you saying four to six continuously?
Potentially, yes. Potentially. Right now, I think we have six kids in placement around the state. So we, we really have to dig deeper with those other counties. Yes, Linda?
How much do we pay to have a child in placement? You're getting to that. Thank you very much. All right.
I shall wait.
So as you see, it has gone down, and that's not because we don't need it, it's because we cannot find beds. So what we pay per day is $350 to $900 a day to keep a kid in detention, depending on where we can find a spot. Now, you know, COVID, tons of facilities closed, so our options are limited. We just don't have those options that we did pre-COVID. So, I mean, that's part of the picture here, when, when we lost many, many beds during that time. Commissioner?
So on the Association of Minnesota Counties, I'm on the Public Safety Committee, and one of their top three priorities was juvenile psychiatric beds. They said there's absolutely very few places where anybody can take them. And also, the assessments, as you brought up, so that you knew what program or what placement was going to be the best for that child. Is that anything that's in here, or are you just talking about detention?
We're just talking detention with assessment. When you go psychiatric, it's a whole different ballgame.
Whole different story.
Whole different ballgame, which I'm not familiar with as much. I don't know if there is.
Who does the assessments now?
Wherever we can find them. We call around the state to find out whoever we can do them, and a lot of them are done by Zoom because we might find an assessor in northern Minnesota that can get it done in the next two weeks so that that kid's not held longer.
All right, so we don't have anybody on staff that can do assessments?
Correct.
Okay.
No, that's a whole different, licensure supervision, that's a whole different degree.
Got it. Thank you.
When you say assessment, tell me what you mean.
We mean a psychological diagnostic assessment.
I see.
So the other thing is juveniles cannot be put into residential treatment facilities or even access some community-based resources without those assessments done. So for instance, if we wanted to refer to our in-home, they have to have all these assessments completed before they would be referred to that in-home service. So that diagnostic is what leads that agent through the whole path of the adolescent. It starts them on the path. And what happens sometimes is when we don't get that done right, we're hot, just like it, we're hodgepodge-ing things together and things aren't very effective. So the lack of assessments is kind of where a lot of agents are struggling to. We're waiting months and months to get assessments completed. So, you know, I kind of liken this to back in the day when they closed the mental health institutions, right? We thought, we, we can't be locking up our people with mental health issues, which I agree with. What they forgot about was there's always that population of people who are going to need pretty intensive services. Those people are now sitting in our jail because they are not getting those community, we have not built up the community resources. So I kind of liken juvenile detention to what's happening, the same thing. And I agree, we don't want to place kids, but there's always that population of kids that are a public safety risk. And if we don't have a place for them, at some point, we're going to be on the news or, you know, we always panic. I mean, our juvenile agents, I get calls every weekend, here's what's happening, what should I do? I can't find a place. How can we, how can we hodgepodge this together? And we're trying to come up with plans. We sent somebody to a Y Day Camp because we couldn't find a detention facility and we had to have them out of the house? That's not, that's not right. We should not be doing that. But that's what we're doing, just trying to figure out ways to, you know, pull in the pieces and, and keep kids. And sometimes they cannot be with their family. It's, you know, what, the one kid locked up right now had a knife to his mother's throat. He could not be home. I don't like the thought of that, but I also know that that's a big safety risk if he's in the house for both of them.
There's just, thank you for bringing this forward, so we actually talk about it and make some choices. There's a whole host of questions. So does it take court order to put someone, a juvenile, in detention for an eight-day, eight-day hold?
A juvenile agent can do an apprehension and detention order that will last for 72 hours, but we're, if it's a business day, we get about 24. The judge's orders are eight days, and the police department can do a 72-hour hold on them also, which they usually consult with the county attorney's office quite often on those.
So then you're at the end of eight, eight days. Do you have to go back to the judge to get?
We have to have a court hearing. Representation has to be given to the juvenile.
So the, one of the biggest questions I have is, right now, that's how we're doing it, and the judges obviously are putting kids in juvenile detention. Is there, do you see any change to that?
I don't. The other thing that's happening is they don't need to honor our court orders anymore. So let's say the judge, if we have somebody at Scott County and we're doing that eight-day hold, if another county comes in who has a contract, we're out, even though our court order says Scott County. So that's the other issue we have, is we're getting bumped left and right. We might have somebody, the, the boy who was in for two weeks, we got bumped, and then there were no other beds available that, at instant in time, and so that's why he ended home on EHM. And we always do least restrictive, that's, that's what you need to remember. An agent is always looking at the least restrictive placement or way to manage a child. So when we get to secure detention, they've gone through the, they've gone through, up the ladder, right? They've tried everything possible to not do secured detention. Sometimes that violent defense or that violence the kid is exhibiting at that moment, of course, determines that.
So if we were to remodel, how many, what kind of a bed capacity could we get? And what's, what's allowed? And what could we get to?
John knows this.
That's a few more slides down.
Well, yeah. It's 24 beds because the rules change if it's more than 24 beds.
The rules change depending on the beds.
Yeah.
Talk about that.
Go ahead, John. When we get to that slide, I think.
Rhonda mentioned Houston County, so they just, within the last six weeks, opened up an eight-day detention facility? They were not getting any adults?
Well, they got, they, yeah, when Fillmore and Winona pulled out, they had, or two.
Well, right now, they have one adult and two juveniles. But so they're, they're, what we would consider as more of the long-term incarceration for-
Yeah, because your assessments, you're looking at 30 to 45 days. If we could turn them around quicker than that, that would really depend on who we get for an assessor, an assessment. And knowing that, you know, we'd like to hire in-house for an assessment, but knowing that when we need psychosexuals, so those sex offenders who come in need a psychosexual, which is a whole different set of criteria for that assessor to do. So we would have to contract out and find somebody out of the building to do that.
But if they're in our facility, we're still going to probably wait a month to get that happen.
A regular assessor?
Unless we have them.
For a regular diagnostic, our hope is that we would hire on staff so we could turn those over quicker. A psychosexual, I don't think you'd have enough of those to warrant a full-time person.
How many beds is the Houston County facility?
I think it's eight.
And it, that's just an eight-day deal too?
Eight-day hold, yeah.
I see.
There's no programming, there's no assessment. You're there for eight days and-
Yep, yep, I understand that.
And then you, you're out for a day and back in for another eight days.
Well, yeah.
Potentially.
You go to your court hearing, and that's considered out, and then you come back.
The court determines if there's grounds to continue to hold the person, is basically it. Now, to, to me, this seems like such a bigger problem than Goodhue County, okay?
Oh, yes, it's a statewide, it's a nationwide problem.
Right. And, you know, we talk about like regional dispatch and, you know, that, I don't mean to have that conversation now, but it just seems to me that we want to not be taking on all of the financial risk and burden as a county, but that we might want to work with some of the other counties where they're paying based on their population, just like we are on our population. It, it, it seems to me that we don't want to assume all of the risk and-
And I think that if you gave us the go-ahead, we would dig deeper and see if there would be contracts.
I don't even mean contracts. I mean, where they're kind of like South Country Health. There's different counties and they're all paying in, and I, I just think that for us to take the risk, what, I, who knows what will happen with this? But if I think about years and years ago, when the jail was built, we thought that there, it was going to be a moneymaker, and it didn't turn out that way. And what my concern would be is, well, yeah, maybe you can get $350 now for that, but is it going to be like adults getting $55, you know, 10 years down the road? And so if the other counties had an equal responsibility, then they'd have an equal responsibility for the costs as, as well. And to, to me, if we only need four to six beds and all of a sudden we're taking financial responsibility for 24, that's a pretty big risk for the, a financial risk for the county to be taking, and I, I think we need to spread that out.
Well, I'm going to, I'll take issue with one thing you said.
All right.
I don't think-
Only one of this.
I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't think, I don't think anybody in the county thought that the jail was ever going to be a moneymaker. It was about cost containment because we, when we ship people out somewhere else, it gets really expensive, so, and that's what we're seeing.
Exactly what they thought.
Yeah, and that's exactly what we're seeing here. It's very expensive when we got a-
Well, it's expensive, and the reality is-
Not the best for the kid.
No, no.
Juvenile, and you have juveniles walking in your community that have had no consequences for extremely violent crimes.
But I know it's hard to find mental health providers for almost everything, so I have to believe finding an assessor wouldn't be that easy. I, I think it would be pretty difficult, and then I think we'd run into that problem of they get a better offer from wherever else, so we have the assessor and they're in high demand, and I would be concerned about that too. And then I also, the other concern that I have, which is why I'd like to see the other counties more involved, is when we have the kid and they, like, maybe I'm wrong about this, but you were saying how our kid got kicked out because there was a contract from another county. Does the county that kicked him out have some liability for what they do as well?
I don't understand your question.
Well, I think when she says the other county has a contract-
No, I understand that, but-
Let's say Goodhue County does this.
Yeah.
And Rice County wants a contract for two beds, and Wabash County wants a contract for two beds, they're going to pay that.
No, I understand that.
Whether it's full or not.
But if the kid from Fillmore County gets kicked out because there's no contract, does Goodhue County have some liability for kicking that kid out if that kid then goes and does something? Maybe Steve, you can speak to that.
I would think not because it's happening all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, but it has to be challenged in court, and then you find out if you have liability for that or not.
Yeah, I think when they're talking being kicked out, they're telling Goodhue County that you need to find another facility for this particular juvenile, then it's back on Goodhue County to find that other facility to place.
But when it doesn't exist, and if you know it doesn't exist, you know what you're essentially doing is sending the person back out into the community.
But what, what Carver County's doing is they're, they're minimizing their X by contracting with other counties to get dollars.
Right. So those smaller counties are going in together to do a contract, you know, so, and like Steel and Mossika, you know, I think there might be another one with them. You know, three counties have a contract.
How long are the contracts?
A year.
So they aren't very long, so they could change to the next cheaper person the next year.
And it was interesting because Houston County just contacted Christine, you know, and nobody approached us at all, any of us, about contracting a bed for them, but now after the fact, we're hearing some calls from a commissioner that's kind of trying to track that down.
And have we looked at contracting ourselves? I mean-
We have, but we would have to go in with somebody. I mean, I have a hard time paying $200,000 and maybe using it. And then, so Carver and I talked about sharing, but we just couldn't transfer to Bemidji. And now Anoka's full, Dakota County's full, the close ones don't have contracts available.
Houston's the one to grab onto and-
Yeah, the close ones are full, so. And, you know, you, we just wanted to, do we pursue this further or do we not? You know, we put a lot of staff time into it already, there's more staff time that has to be put in it to get all the questions answered. We don't have all the answers.
And what does Olmstead County do?
They contract with Anoka County.
I see, okay.
You know, and Olmstead got, you know, they had a regional, you know, Dakota County was considered regional, Many Rivers was considered regional, you know, and Many Rivers closed, and the, the county board closed that down. Nobody was prepared for that. I don't know what all was going on there, but that's been closed a few years because that was another one of our, you know, we use that quite often.
So, so for me, I'd have to feel like we were minimizing the overall financial risk to the county to be able to do that, and a contract of just a year of, of guaranteeing a bed doesn't protect us very much. I, I think they'd have to be, have a bigger commitment than one year and then going to the next lowest bidder.
Well, we could look at longer-year contracts, two, two to three years, I would imagine.
We'll roll into the estimates for you guys, and John and Christine will address this one.
Well, I'll just go back to the staffing levels. There's a lot of things you can do based off of DOC rules. So staffing is determined by every 12 juveniles that would be housed in the center. Right, we came to the 24-bed, was the nighttime coverage you need, so anything under 25 only required one officer to be on. So if we went above 25, now you're looking at two. So we're trying to kind of, what's the most cost-effective if you were to do this? So that's where we kind of got to how we got to some of the numbers. Even the top slide there were, you need to have, designate a single administrator of the facility. We just went with a similar type because for comparison sakes, like an ADC captain. We just went with a similar type, because for comparison sakes, like an ADC captain. Is that going to be at a captain level? I don't know. It's just trying to get the best we could right now on paper for you. But you can see on the middle part there, which just says, so yeah, for during the day when juveniles would be up, you need at least one staff per 12 residents. We could house up to 30 in there, but once you kind of get beyond that 24, it just, once over 24, now you're adding another staff for all those people. So just the effectiveness of that cost wasn't there. So that's where we at least started looking at a 24-bed model.
And are those numbers actually adequate? One for 12 during the day and...
I would just go with those are the DOC standards and the 2960 rules. I don't know. Don't have a lot of experience with the juvenile side. We've talked about it, we think it would be. And whenever you're talking, and I'll just put this, so when we staff at 24/7, we're always staffing when we say what the minimums are. Well, there's always that additional, because you have people that take vacation, sick, all of that. So yeah, during the day, there's going to be two, but there's actually going to be three. At night, say 60% of the time, you'd have two people there. So we've looked at some other ways that's going to be some savings for us, possibly. We're not going to have two people in that juvenile detention center at night if we don't need them there. One person can do that. Maybe that person's backing up. We had someone calling sick on the ADC side. So we can deep dive into that if we get consensus moving forward. There's just a lot of different areas with this. But that kind of gives you the overall, just with the staffing, what we were kind of looking at. And we can go to the next slide. And I would even say, when you look at some of the remodeling costs, this was our best guess on certain things. There was one cost, we knew from the DOC when they came through. It just gave us kind of a site assessment, what you would need, how would this work? One big thing was you have to have, through the 2960 rules, visitation in the ADC can be done through video visitation, it can be done through iPads. For juveniles, just different rules. You have to afford where they're in the same room as their parent, where it could be, they can hug, they can do those type of things. So we don't have that in our facility right now, so we need to remodel certain things. Is everything on here an absolute must? No, but we're trying to give you the best. We don't want to undersell anything. We want to, here's what we think we would need to do to get it going. But yeah, could we cut back some stuff? Probably. There's even some, slide two, it's, or, sorry. Item two where it was, we've got some doors built in. Sight and sound is the big thing when you house ADC, or, sorry, adults and juveniles. You've got to have some sight and sound barriers. So we've looked at what would protect us the most, because there's always that liability side on the backside where, or a DOC gigging us on something. So we just built in a lot of things. And if we were to proceed forward with this, I mean, I think it would be a time for you to even come over to the ADC and physically look at what we're talking about when we say the new F-unit conference room, what that means. So we're trying to utilize even existing space within a lot of our thought processes. So, and Christine can speak to it, too, but this is, we think, pretty accurate for what the startup cost may, would be. You know, it's even down to body cameras, radios, desks and chairs, new uniforms. You won't see things like tasers on here or chemical spray, because that's the difference between a juvenile facility and adult. No tasers are going into that juvenile facility. There's just different rules, there's different use of force standards and all of that. So we tried to do as much looking into this as we could, but at the same time, we can't look into everything. The 2960 rules are very exhaustive, so we're just kind of scratching the surface with that. Go to the next slide. So when Christine had put some of this together, once again, we weren't going to underestimate. We didn't want to come in here and tell you it's only going to cost you a million dollars in, with some of these wages for people. So when we do, we did some of this, we know we need, call it a captain, call it an administrator of the JDC. We know we have to designate someone per 2960 rules. Do we know we need a programs director? No, but it's a good possibility. We know our programs director on the ADC side is pretty busy and won't have the capacity to take on more with that. Do we need a training sergeant? We don't know, but we're at least built it in now, so we can give you a full picture of what could be a possibility. We're not going to know a lot of what we truly need till we get some more, if we do get consensus to go forward, looking at this concept. The one thing I'm confident on is, just through the 2960 rules, is we'll need at least 10 staff to be there every day in those, on those housing room floors. So that's where you're kind of seeing the maximum in benefit and risk. We do have there like the $150,000 for a mental health provider. We don't believe that's required. That could be something we, as Rhonda had spoken to, where it'd be a great benefit to the facility. So that's where kind of, some of these numbers come. Same with record staff. Maybe we need record staff, maybe we don't. We just don't know. We haven't really, we're just scratching the surface on that as well.
And how many days are you hoping to be able to? Is this eight days, too, or is this...
I think we looked at it, a long-term hold facility probably had the, because when you start talking eight days...
I understand, I understand. And so what's the educational requirement then?
So the educational requirement, we've made some initial phone calls. We don't believe there's a cost to Goodhue County, is that it's that home district's responsibility to do that. So that would be with a contract through either the Goodhue Ed District or the Redwing High School, since they're housed here. There's a lot of different possibilities. We know of facilities where they do it with, just on a computer. So they would get their education in there. It wouldn't be, we don't know this for sure, because...
So it's an unknown, really?
Yeah, it's an unknown. A teacher might be coming in through the Redwing District, but Redwing will then contract back with, say, if the kid's out of Hibbing, will contract back with, they bear the brunt of that cost.
It would seem if we're going to do this, we want to make sure we're actually meeting the needs of these juveniles, whether it's mental health needs or education needs or whatever. So I think we'd have to assume there'd be significant expense to that.
Yeah, my understanding, talking to them, it all goes back on that homeschool district, just when we're looking at these numbers, it wouldn't be on us. But yeah, there are significant things you need. Even, I think there was different dietary, which...
Dealing with different homeschool districts is going to get you different answers and different willingness to support or not support, and all kinds of things like that.
Yep, there's different dietary needs, all that, that we've kind of gotten some bids for. Even the recreational needs, I think the sheriff's kind of indicated, when they first looked at our ADC, we thought, oh, we're going to have to do a ton of stuff to make this possible. We just happen to have the best facility they had seen for just how our, kind of the location is, where our F-unit sits compared to others.
So it could be a real service to the state or to surrounding counties as well, but figuring out if there's a way to make it cash flow where the risk here is reasonable is kind of the question.
Yeah, and the next slide up would be another example of when we kind of went with the mask, kind of just some of the questions we've had. You got the maximum risk, the maximum benefit. We're talking a 24-bed facility, so obviously you can see on the top one, we're only calculating for 15 beds. So, you know, truly, if you wanted to go 24 beds, they're always going to be filled, and 14 of them are going to be with other counties with a full-time contract. We just can't say that, we don't know that, so we're not, we can't tell you that. But that's where Christine kind of, we worked together just to go, maybe this is the realistic look. We could definitely go over our projections, but we didn't want to, like we had said, oversell you on anything. And that's also assuming, we don't know what the rate is, to be honest. Is it, and Rhonda can maybe speak to this, there's varying rates out there. Hennepin County's charging 900 a day. I'll let Rhonda speak to that.
They are all over the board from 350 to 900. And then if you have a juvenile who's creating waves, they might charge you double that day, just those days that juveniles being inappropriate. They, it's all over. We couldn't get some people to, it was very interesting. And then some people also pay, they pay their bed save. So you might pay that bed save, and then you might pay a per diem above that bed save. So some counties are charging that, where you have a contract, but once you use that bed, then we charge you even more. So it was all over the board.
You're paying a base price to hold the bed, and then an additional if you actually used it.
And then additional price. And then other ones, you just paid your price, and that's what you paid.
This, I would assume it's separation male and female, or can we, is it all a male facility or all a female facility?
It would be an all-male facility based off staffing. And the reason for that is now you go back into your 2960 rules, is if you have females, only female detention staff can supervise them. So you can't have the, the gender crossover there. However, if you have males, you can have female detention staff. And if you even kind of look at the demographics of even our ADC now, we're much heavier on the female side for staffing than we are on the male side. So is it possible we could do a female? I just don't know if there'd be also the bed capacity for females. So that's where we kind of lean towards the, the male side. And I'd also say, one thing we didn't indicate before, we can house more than 30 juveniles even in there, but what we didn't want to do was double-bunk them. So you had, you could do that per the 2960 rules. You could have two juveniles in the same cell, but there's a lot of liability side that goes back with that, when you start talking the prior considerations and things like that. Just, we've had some indications that, talking to medical providers, where say your average eight adult inmate, maybe 55% of them are on medication on the juvenile side, and Rhonda can speak to it as well. It's higher to like 85%. There's just a lot more going on with those kids with some of that. So that's also why we limited it to just one per cell, just knowing there could be more behavioral issues.
So is, is, I don't know if you can answer it. Is there, obviously, there's more males getting incarcerated or put in detention. Is that because there are no female beds? Is that why, is there, or is there, I can't believe that there's no females that probably shouldn't be in detention, but there aren't yet.
There's very limited female, I mean, females...
Spoken like a true female.
Females do end up in detention, but historically, the number's always less.
And are there any beds available for?
Well, you have a juvenile female in Houston County right now. Goodhue County does.
And if, and they have, you said there was two in there, so is it two females then? Or is it two separate, two separate...
I think they have males and females, because I think the other ones are...
They can house both in Houston.
Okay.
If it's eight days?
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I wouldn't believe they could be in the same...
Dakota County has them in the same facility, Scott County has them in the same facility. There are some that have male and female.
And I have to believe these kids will refuse their meds constantly, because that's just how it works. One leverage they have is to refuse their meds, so...
Well, and then sometimes, you know, of course, health and human services won't be able to access these beds. However, we, you know, those really high-risk kids, we're usually working together on, because we have mental health going on, we have criminal behavior going on. So, you know, even with that, we can help, you know, HHS at moments when, right, there are no beds, they can't find anything. We can at least get that kid into a safe place till we can find a bed, or their social worker can find a psychiatric bed. Is it the right thing? No, but at least we know they're safe. So, and that's what's happening in a lot of these facilities, right? We're getting those kids somewhere so they're safe, till when hopefully a psychiatric bed opens up. It may never open up, and they just manage as best they can and get them back in the community from that facility.
Well, and quite frankly, my, probably the, to me, the biggest question is, is an ADC the right place for a juvenile detention facility? Or is it somewhere else? Is it another secure facility that's not an ADC? I mean, personally, I think it is. It shouldn't be in an ADC. It should be in another kind of secure facility, not connected with an ADC. But that, that's probably a, you know, if the state got involved, that's where they should go, not...
Right. And historically, that has been the way it has been, but now with the lack of beds, we were the fourth jail that the DOC inspected to see if it was appropriate for a JDC. So everyone around the state is looking at this because of the lack of beds.
Right. I mean, it's, it's kind of a, we have an empty facility, this is an opportunity, probably not the best for the kids long-term. They'd be better off in a different kind of facility, but...
Correct. We wouldn't even be having this conversation if we didn't have an empty pod.
I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not, I will say I'm not against it, but there's just a ton of questions that I have around, what are we, what kind of a message are we sending to kids? What kind of a message are we sending to the public that we're going to put them in that facility versus...
Right.
It probably bothers me more than...
If we were going to look at something regionally, would it be this facility?
Wouldn't be that.
Would it be something else?
And, and I know regional just becomes difficult, and finding that out in all the different areas that I'm working in, I know it's just...
Yeah, I understand that.
For everybody, everybody's all about, what do I get out of it? It's not what I get, it's what we get collectively out of it that we should, we should really be looking at, and we all get hung up on what's, what's it mean to me? And that just bothers the heck out of me.
I think when you look at the traditional jail, when they slam those, you know, rolling doors shut with the bars, it's different from, they have a room now, correct? I mean, it, there, it's better than what it used to be, but you're right, it's still in prison.
It's, it's, it's just having to walk through that space to get to where you're going to be housed, that just, it just doesn't seem right at all for juveniles.
Take away hope.
Just doesn't, doesn't. Just, that's probably what bothers me more than anything about it. We need, we, I understand, we need, we need to find a solution to this. I just, I, I really have a struggle with it.
What's our next step? Looking for consensus, looking for more information?
Well, for me, I definitely support moving forward to at least look at it. I had my own experience a couple of months ago, where I got called all weekend long by a manager in an emergency room at a hospital, because they had a juvenile that they were housing there in the emergency room. It was a ju, it was a Goodhue County juvenile that needed to be put into placement, and there wasn't a bed to put them in. So therefore, from what I understand, there were calls constantly being made. So, I mean, everyone was trying, but the bottom line was, there wasn't a bed anywhere. And so the child ended up spending, I think, like 10 days in the emergency room, of which I'm assuming the county pays for while they're there. But that's not the place for them either. And this is a child that needed to be detained, physically detained, so therefore, they sat there with the emergency room watching over them until they could find a bed.
But I, I don't think our goal would be wanting to solve non-criminal mental health problems by sending them to, I don't know, I don't know, a JDC. I mean, that wouldn't be the goal.
No, but this was a child that was dangerous enough that they didn't want to allow out. They were brought to the emergency room for something...
That should be, unless they've committed a crime, that should be a mental health hospitalization solution we have to solve. And we wouldn't want to solve that by locking kids up in a...
No, but it's, well, that's a bigger problem even than the one we are...
Well, it is. I agree. I don't, I tend to have the answer, but it'd be like if an adult, if there wasn't a bed for them in the hospital, you're not going to lock them up in the county jail.
Right.
That is true, however, there are no places for violent juveniles with mental health, so they are getting locked up. And your jail is full of mentally ill people.
Well, I agree.
You know? So the reality is, when I talk about partnering with HHS, that's exactly what we would be doing. We would be helping them so they could secure a bed, because nobody is safe with that juvenile in the community. It is wrong, absolutely.
It is.
But that is the reality of how the system is working right now.
So I, I don't disagree with you. I'm just reluctant to have that become the solution, and then it becomes the solution, and then a better solution isn't, isn't even, I don't mean Goodhue County in particular, I mean the whole system. Yeah.
It is a very broken system.
It is. It is.
It's been for many, many years.
Yeah, and truthfully, your comment about closing the state hospitals, that was in large part an economic decision without the consequences being adequately considered or, you know, planned for.
So if we do have a consensus to move forward, what type of additional time and dollars are you thinking, or what extra information would you actually get?
Well, I, this has already taken a lot of time, and that's okay, because we wanted to bring at least an option for the board. So we still do have two options, we can leave it, leave one open and rotate inmates, which I don't disagree with, but we just wanted you to have the options here. It'll take significant more staff time and dollars to do some more research. And by that, I would mean, we would go out to a Carver County and say, if we do this, are you 100% in? And we do it for all the other counties. So at least we would preferably contract and have them say, yes, we will contract. So now we have some actual dollars we can put on here, but that would take some time, for sure.
Where is Steel and Rice at now? They're contracted to someone, you said, who-
Wasik and Steel are with Anoka. I don't know where Rice is going. And they may not have a contract, a lot, you know, we don't have a contract, Wabashaw County doesn't have a contract, you know, Wabashaw couldn't afford a contract, I mean, I talked to their director, and I was at a director's meeting on Friday, and everybody's interested, you know, it's just really getting people to sign the contract and commit, and us to figure out our price point, all of those things.
And we, if we were doing this, we'd want it to be a longer-term plan than just a year or two. We wouldn't want, that, that wouldn't be sensible at all.
And so maybe you do-
Then think about other problems with adolescents. Another thing they'll do all the time, they'll cheek their meds, they won't take them, and then they'll give them to somebody else, and then you're going to have somebody with a bad reaction to a med they weren't supposed to take, and then I don't know what you do, do you bring them to the ER then, or do you, you're smiling, Marty, because you can, you can foresee it too.
Oh, they do it, they do it every day.
Yeah, it's going to happen, pretty regularly. So to me, it seems like we have to understand not necessarily just this option, but a range of options, and I don't want to send kids to Bemidji either, but I'd want to be able to compare the costs and understand something about the facility. I understand your point, that this isn't ideal to put youth in, in the, in the county jail, essentially.
And I don't want to be a devil's advocate either, but I, because I do know the need, but who's to say, so in 20, or 2000, when we built, we were going to have all these inmates? We did for a time.
Right, I know.
Now we don't. Who's to say in 10 years, we're going to all of a sudden have a big influx and more inmates, like we were in 2000? We don't know how, what's going to happen.
No, we don't know.
And now, let's say, we do have a JDC now, we're going to be having to outboard our, our adults too, so.
And is-
It's just a reality.
Is there any possibility of us contracting with the Red Wing Correctional Facility? I'm not saying that's a good idea, that it's a bad idea, I'm just asking.
You mean for their adults?
They wouldn't-
No, for, for-
Their juveniles, no.
They won't do that.
Their juveniles are a commitment, that is state prison for juveniles, it's a totally different, that is the end of the road for juveniles?
They won't do it.
No.
You wouldn't want it.
We don't want that.
You wouldn't want to start somebody at the end of the road either?
No, no, of course not, of course not. I, I agree with that, that you wouldn't want to do that.
That was something that came up at the Public Safety Committee meeting, and Commissioner Schnell made it pretty clear that probably wasn't going to ever happen.
And did the Public Safety Committee have any thoughts on this particular problem for juveniles?
No, other than it's in the top four of the issues that the Public Safety Committee is, wants to move forward.
With the legislature?
Pardon?
With the legislature, you mean?
Yes, but I mean, that's pretty slow-going, I think we all know.
Yes, absolutely.
So I mean, it's, but it was a complaint, and specifically, the mental health of juveniles, but I mean, it was a huge complaint of, what are we going to, everybody was looking for beds, that was the bottom line.
I guess I'm leaning towards, I would like you to, you know, get up so get some more information. Part of it I look at, okay, do we have a responsibility? We have an opportunity? I mean, there's not a lot of counties out there that already have a facility built and, you know, with a small retrofit, we could do this, so, in fact, we do have a lesser option, but we are going to put our taxpayers on a higher, higher risk if it doesn't work out. You know, let's say in, in two years, this thing is just tanking, you know, then all of a sudden, now we got to worry about officers and jobs and, you know, I mean, there's, if, with the issue at the state, is there, you know, with this, if you, let's say we're going to go do, put additional time into this, can we pursue with the state and say, hey, you know what, we're willing to do this, what else, how else could you help? You know, the state corrections, or is there any other, you know, I mean, we threw money at everything else at the state, maybe they'd look at, you know, something this important to-
Are you looking at funding or answers to the issues?
Funding, funding.
I think I could look at Office of Justice programs and some of those places for money, money. The state of Minnesota, I don't think is going to, because every facility would be asking them for money.
And I think our first obligation is to the four to six kids who are Goodhue County residents that need services, and I, I believe it would be a mistake to believe this will end up being a moneymaker. I could be wrong, but I think we'd have to start out believing, no, it's not going to be a moneymaker. Probably going to cost us quite a bit of money, and do we want to take that on?
I don't know at any point where incarceration's been a moneymaker.
I don't think it's going to be.
I just don't know.
I don't think it's going to be.
That's not, those two, those two don't fit together at all.
No, so I'm, I'm a little concerned about building a 24-bed facility for a four to six-bed problem, and so that the costs and problems end up becoming ours, but-
But I would, I would, with the trend and everything that's going on, I would think the other counties would use us if we did do this.
To begin with, just like they did 25 years ago with the jail, oh, there.
But didn't, so, the elephant in the room, Wabashaw's not, they don't have that many inmates. They have space, they have, probably have space to do this, if they wanted to do it.
Sure they do.
A year ago, I, I asked him if he was willing to do that.
And didn't, didn't Rice and Steel just kind of split up? Did Rice enlarge their jail so they didn't send so many to Steel?
Built a brand-new one.
Built a brand-new one.
Yep, so then Steel's probably got space. I mean, it's not that, it's not that jails out there don't have space, obviously Houston County's got space, lots of space, and they don't even have a facility that's paid for yet, so they're really hurting. Yeah, it's just, I, I really, I think we need more information, I just, I don't know, I don't know, it's really taxing on staff to go forward with it, and-
We could do a lot of research, and then, like, we still can't tell you what's going to happen two years into this thing.
But would we be better off contracting with one of these other places that have space, knowing exactly what their costs would be? And I'm not saying we would be, but that's one of the things I think we need to understand, if we could do it for $300,000 a year contracting.
I think the hard part is, and I know we're going to hear it, is that it's the travel.
Yeah, I understand that.
It's all the transportation is really, it's really, it, you know, it's, you're right, it's two hours to Caladonia, it's two hours back, it's four hours, it's a whole day.
Half a day, yeah.
And you got to bring them back every week to go to court. Really, if the court system changed, or changed, it would help, but I don't see that happening either.
They try to zoom as much as they can, but like the eight-day holds, they have to physically remove them and bring them back.
And it's every eight-day hold. It's not the first one, it's every one.
Correct.
Yeah. I think, I think we need more information. I, I don't even know what the information is, though. I'm not in that, I, you guys need to tell us what that information is, because I, I couldn't ask all the right questions, but I'm really, I'm really concerned, really about where we're, where we're putting juveniles and what it looks. Facility really bothers me, but I understand, it's what we have.
Well, and it reminds me of MCF Red Wing, I remember when they put up the fence and the razor wire, for years, we did not have that. We walked openly on campus, I could walk in, I could walk right to Dayton, and then I remember when that changed, and how hard that was in the juvenile system to accept that change. But that was the beginning of a higher, it's, it's a different kid than we had 40 years ago. It is a very different juvenile we're working with. We have a, a level of violence that is very sad to see.
Wow, and my wife grew up in Red Wing, and she remembers. Oh, you're going to stay inside, because somebody walked away from the campus, so everybody was supposed to stay inside till they caught them.
But for, but for smaller counties, of course, they don't have that many juveniles, and so that's why I think the state's really not stepping up to the plate like they should, because there should be, I don't want to have a debate about state hospitals, but like there were regional state hospitals to meet the needs of the chronically mentally ill, we do need some regional facilities, and whether or not individual counties should be responsible for that, my own feeling is probably not, but that doesn't mean the state will step up and do what they should be doing.
Well, when the state closed them, they said, privates will take it over.
Yeah, but they don't.
Privates aren't going to take it over.
Well, the reason they aren't is because it's a money loser, and-
Of course it is, yeah.
And-
That's why, that's why the government ends up doing the stuff that loses money.
Exactly, because it's a money loser, and-
Then we're expected not to lose money, and it's like, no, that's not going to happen.
But that's why I don't want to take on other counties losing money. We can lose our own money, just fine.
What are we looking at?
Are there three of you that are interested in more information? Otherwise, I'm not-
I would like more information.
Yes?
Well, I always like more information, so, that, don't take that as one vote, one more or the other.
It can be a money-losing situation, no matter how you do it, I don't think it makes any sense.
It may, it may, it may be that now we digest this, and we get a list of what are the, some of our concerns, question, I think you know most of them, but, because I think you need to put together, what, what do I need to answer? And that's the hard part, because you could answer a bunch of questions, and then we come with three more, so. If we have questions, I think it's on our, it's on our, on our behalf to get them to you, what, what we see as, and I'll be with a commissioner from Houston County, and I kind of want to pick his brain as to how they did it and how they, why they got there, and if they think it's going to just cost them money anyway, less than having it empty.
Well, to be honest, Houston's a heck of a lot closer than Bemidji, so.
Yeah.
We're actually very happy about it.
Yeah.
And if the county's not opposed to $500,000, $600,000 for out-of-home placement budget for us, it may not be in your best interest to put all the money in here. If you're willing to pay out that to somebody else, we can see if Dakota County will contract with us.
We'd at least like to know those numbers, I think.
Numbers of-
Of what it costs to contract with Houston County, or what it would cost to contract with whoever, Dakota County.
They're all over. I mean, we've started those phone calls, but they, and Dakota won't commit to bottom line, I mean, some of them wouldn't commit till you're-
So what it would be, is unless we could see the service was different one place than another, we'd take the lowest contract, unless we-
But the reality is, we'd go for closer, I'm not, I'm not going to be no-
Yeah, that would be another thing.
The reality is, we'd go Dakota, Anoka doesn't have any spots left, I know that, so.
Thanks for all your work on this. It's, it's, it's a tough nut to crack, any way you slice it.
Right.
Well, I would suggest then, come back, February, maybe, if we're lucky. Is that okay?
Yep.
Those eyes said, geez, not that long. This is a lot of work, and I know it, I, I get it, Rhonda.
You just know there's other things.
Your job, your job is, is an almost impossible task, you and your crew, I, I feel for you every day, because it, it's not easy, it is just not easy. I'm, and I'm, quite frankly, when I asked about where the courts are going to go with this, it kind of worries me if, if they change a direction and say, no, we don't want them in ADCs, we want them in some other kind of placement, and they could.
Not if there isn't one.
Well, no, they can anyway.
Absolutely, they can.
Yeah, yeah.
They can, and I think in 2026, legislature's going to change where you cannot be charged, it's going to go to age 13. So now we have juveniles in the system, 10 and above can be charged with a crime, it's going to change to 13 in 26, unless they knock that out, but at this point, it's passed. So that's going to change how your HHS is going to look, it's going to change how we're going to look also.
Well, and, you know, and it kind of makes me think how much, how much stronger position AMC needs to take, and probably with the League of Cities, probably with the school district, with the, the School Board Association, because it's really collectively a much stronger position with the legislature to come at it from all of them being involved, because it affects cities, police in the cities, it affects us, and it certainly affects school districts. Certainly does, so.
Right, well, thank you.
So as far as the barriers, we'll just wait until the budget's approved, if that happens. If you need anything else about the barriers, let us know, in the meantime. I don't know where we're, where we're at with the maintenance thing, I, that wasn't my baby, but.
With what thing?
The maintenance.
Maintenance request, I guess?
As far as doing the study part of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we got an answer on that, so we'll have to bring that back as well. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
So the maintenance-